Woo-hoo. Good evening, welcome to March 23rd, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. I...I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit and make the conception first for...
You have two conceptual ones.
Okay, the one I don't know about, I'm not going to move up to first. I'm going to move up the one I know about up to first. For Christina and George Overton, 257 Dustin Tavern Road, map 411 lot 281.
What podium, sir? State your name, address, all that kind of stuff, so maybe we can get you on the record.
Hello, everybody. Sure, my name is George Overton. I live at 257 Dustin Tavern Road in Ware, New Hampshire.
Can you pass this out over here?
I don't think I made enough copies, I only made five. Sorry.
We're sharing.
Yep.
So the first, first three pages are like a conceptual outline as far as what my wife and I are looking to accomplish. And then the second page and the, excuse me, the fourth and the fifth page are just visual representations of the house. I took some pictures so you guys can see exactly what's going on. Maybe you're familiar with the property, maybe you're not.
Well, you're going to make us read all this, I'll read this real quick.
Sure. So the last page is the entrance, there's a separate entrance, there's a room on the back of our house, it's about 19 by 24.
Is she actually called Tavern Building?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So you're going to do this pretty much on appointment?
Um, yeah, in the beginning, my wife's going to have it sporadic hours as far as maybe people picking things up. But then eventually she'd like to be open, I believe she stayed there about like 20 hours a week.
I'll take your word for that.
It's on the, I think it's on the very last page.
Yep.
So that's a picture from standing in our driveway. Our address is on Dustin Tavern, but our actual driveway's off Oak Hill. So you're not quite turning into the property directly from Dustin Tavern.
Nothing you're doing requires running water at all inside?
Say it again?
Everything you do is dry goods, there's no running water at all?
No, there's no, there's no water hookup in there, just the hose on the outside of the door. But I don't, I don't plan on using that. If there's water inside, we got a problem.
Just dry good stuff, it's not...
Mm-hmm.
Yep. My only concern right now is parking.
Yeah.
So our parking lot is pretty spacious. I work during the day, my wife's home to the left side of the garage, there's like a double parking area that goes back. It's length of, or the width of probably about a car and a half and goes back two car lengths. So my wife will park there and then it will essentially leave the whole lot open. So there'll be nobody else in the yard. That's the entrance to the, to the, to the place.
That's this, yes.
Yeah, the entrance to the shop is to the left and the door to the right's our main entrance to our house.
Can you, um, for a sign, you need to get a sign permit.
Yeah.
For a, um, could you do a directional sign at the road saying, little arrow, you know, pointing the driveway saying store parking or something?
Yeah, that's fine.
Because that, that's a really tough spot to have anybody parking the street because you're on the corner of Oak Hill Road and...
You're assuming someone will just see it and stop kind of on the road? Yeah, that's fine, I can, I can, I can put, you know, like Tavern Antiques, Dustin Tavern Antiques parking out front or something like that.
And that doesn't, that doesn't, it's a, that doesn't count as a sign because it's a directional sign?
Okay.
So when you apply for your sign permit, you don't need to include that in the area and all that stuff?
Okay.
So you said you had enough parking for five cars?
Easily, yes.
But when you, I see you anticipate hiring an employee, so technically four. I'm assuming your employee would drive to work.
Yeah, that's just for transparency as far as the plan down the line, it's going to be probably quite some time before that happens. But yes, you're right.
But you're, when you, when you talk about parking five cars, it's in front of the garage.
As long as they pull in the driveway, you don't park in the street.
On the side of the garage, you can put your wife's car and the employees.
Yeah, when I do snow removal, I get the house, I'll park the two cars on that side so I can clear the driveway and then move them over. So two cars can easily fit there.
The other end.
Yeah.
Right out where, was it, Forest?
Horse Road.
Horse Road, come, oh, right, right there.
I can't think of how many people flies inside.
Oh, yes.
That's been...
I know a little mile away and I know that you're...
That's a little bit, a little bit of everything over the years.
Dahlberg was up in here. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's why I'm saying a car parked on the side of the road here wouldn't be a good idea.
They used to have eight to 10 vehicles parked in there any given time when it was an apartment thing.
So all your access is off Oak Hill?
Correct, our driveway, our mailbox is on Dustin Tavern, but our driveway's off Oak Hill.
Yeah. So when do you plan on starting, hope to start?
As soon as possible.
What's everybody thinking? It's definitely in allowed use.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, is it, what type of concern? Home shop or something or?
Well, it's, the uses are allowed in 25, 4, 3 and grocery store and all that kind of stuff is part of it, so it's...
Let me just think of the scope of it.
Oh, you're fine.
Size.
Yeah, it's no problem.
No, I mean, as far as would be considered, because it's only one, potentially one non-family member employee, home-based business and...
No, it's not a home-based business.
Why not?
Because he's in the village district.
We can't have a home-based business in a village district.
You don't need to go that way. Because the permitted uses are, of course, I can't find it now.
24, 3, 5 and 24, 3, 4. That's commercial, so...
Limited to grocery, drugstore, general merchandise.
That it references that on page 27.
That's commercial, that's commercial zoning.
Right, but it references that on 27, the bottom of the page.
Everything except a wonder mat.
Yep. And similar uses, so it definitely includes an antique shop.
Yes, it's clothes, furniture.
Retail and certain, we'll say...
General furniture apparel, specialty tobacco. So he's definitely in allowed use, that's one issue. The question is, does he have to do a site plan?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it's a home-based business and... Because it's a legal use, carried out entirely within a dwelling and occupying more than... How big, how big is the area you're occupying?
456 square feet.
He's under 500 square feet. The building's plenty big enough, that's less than 25% of the building.
Yes.
Yep.
Depends if you count the dance floor.
Yeah. So we...
I don't have a problem not doing a site plan.
Well, I don't either.
Until he hires employees. Until he hires employees.
Or hits this.
Well, that is, that's the 500 square feet he's talking about.
Yep.
I'm going to say if he hires employees, then there could be parking issues and septic issues and all kinds of things at that point that we should probably look at better, but...
There's no, there's no public restrooms if that makes a difference.
Well, employees would be.
Oh, the, when, the employee.
That's what I'm saying, when you get to employees, then you got...
That's a different animal.
It gets, scope gets bigger all of a sudden.
Sure. I believe that was actually part of the plan is obviously getting the town involved once that situation happens. I think that's on the, it's on the third page of the plan.
Yeah, you're saying, just you and your wife until you get going and you estimate 20 hours a week.
Well, would one employee make that much difference?
Well, I just figured that was a good landmark.
A good benchmark?
Good benchmark, yeah.
That being his wife? No, no.
No, no.
Not, non-family member type employees.
In other words, other than he owns...
Hire somebody.
Other than, other than him and his wife.
Family member matters, if they would be related?
No, no, other than him and his wife.
Other than you, if, if somebody lives in the house, then they don't count.
Fair enough.
On specific employees, you have to provide them with bathroom, water, all that type of stuff.
So if you don't have employees, you don't see 500 square feet?
Say that again?
Or...
Or, or above, those are the and/or?
One or the other.
Okay. Well, I don't plan on building anymore, so...
Just, just a sign by the driveway to get people to pull in the driveway, not park in the street.
Sure, I have no problem with that. Is there any requirements for that particular sign or anything?
I, there is, it can only be so big.
Okay.
Certain size.
Doesn't go, doesn't, it's not counted as square footage for the sign requirement?
No, the directional sign generally has a certain size, the size of it to it's...
Okay.
Are you going to have a sign for the business, no?
Yes.
Yep. You'll have to get a sign permit for that.
I'm sure Tony can get them on that.
They'll give you the dimensions anyways.
I'm sure Tony can help you with that.
Yep.
Any other questions for him, comments, suggestions?
Well, it seems pretty, uh, simple. But the only thing that I wouldn't do is write up 20 hours a week. Because I don't, I mean, who would know the difference? But why, why not just go with 40 right here, it may have been a difference, rather than limit yourself.
Um, I, I guess just based on the amount of time we have, like my daughter has other obligations outside of school and I work and my wife takes her to those things, like dance class, things like that. So that's, I guess, just a starting point.
If you're happy with it, that's fine with us, I'm sure.
She's happy with it, I'm happy with it.
No comment on that?
Better not.
Yep, yep. One thing, she's listening.
I hope by the adage, happy wife, happy life.
You are correct.
Okay, go for it. Good luck.
Perfect. That's it? Sure.
We should keep one for, at least one for records.
Throw in the file.
What's the other conceptual Naomi? We'll save her for last.
Oh.
No, Ms. Tina.
You can't get your ice cream anymore.
I couldn't even get inside anymore.
Wait, what's this about no ice cream?
I used to own Nana's.
Wrong place.
Yeah. Still had her ice cream a lot though.
Yeah.
She used the kids as a tax rate. My kids.
Tina Connor, 1387 South Stark Highway. We have met with Renewal by Anderson and we have picked out some really nice black framed windows. And we were told we needed to come and get approval because we're in the village district. As far as...
They're not purple?
No, see, and even Tony said if I picked out a nice lilac color, I might be able to get away with it by, for the house, but no.
Because it's those specific colors.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so that's why we're here is to see about getting the approval. It's just going to be simply the frame of the windows and then it's going to be white siding around them.
So if you'd like to have a current view of the house from the street, I'm not sure we'll show you as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah, familiar.
The windows themselves, sashes will be black.
It's black and then there'd be grids between the panes.
Put in the windows, this would be the black windows that would be...
The trim, the outside is white.
The trim is white, yes.
And the house is still going to be yellow.
Well, no, we're doing the windows first and then we're going to do the house. We're hoping to go, we're going white with the house.
From the distance?
Yeah. We're trying to make it look nicer, so help us out here.
Yeah, no, I didn't know if we'd do this. Yeah, that'll...
Yeah.
I see.
No.
And with the older houses, it's just going to...
Yeah. We never even gave it a thought because we have black trim on Nana's. My mom had started painting the windows black and nobody said a word. So we didn't think about it until Renewal called to see if they needed a permit and then everything started up. So, but while we're here for that, I figured I'd probably better ask now because we are going to do, we have, some of the house is vinyl sided. The newer part, the unit three that Guy Laporte added on. So we want to find out if we have to keep the clapboard on the main part of the house and just repaint that, fix that. Or if we can continue the vinyl siding, because that would be definitely changing.
This is a picture of what a finished black window would look like in the opening with the white trim that we'd be doing around the windows.
Thank you.
We're not changing the size. It's 20 windows that are being changed in total. No, no sizes are being changed at all, they're all as they are. But just the addition of some gridding in between.
You notice black sash and, or sashes on any other houses in the...
So there are, there's a couple of houses that's actually, one that's two houses up that has a brownish type window. There's a porch that's right past the town hall here and has black windows in it. Also, one of your businesses that's right next door has a black window with a black sash.
Yep. Got it. Yep, I see. Thank you.
It's consistent with others.
Yep. There's nothing that says they can't paint them black, so...
Well, if there was, if there was another building in the village district with old black sashes, that'd be a little different story. But there are some here, so it is kind of consistent with those.
Yep. Can I ask a dumb question? Where is this our purview?
Yeah.
20...
22.9.1 has nothing to do with this. That says all buildings should be preserved and if new structures are built, never mind. 22.9. I don't see how it's...
You did it before with the gentleman.
With the gentleman, he came in on his own and...
Right.
Last entry says to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case basis.
He wanted to change the color of his house and there's nothing that says he couldn't paint it the color he wanted, so...
Which kind of makes it our purview, I think.
The zoning kind of throws it away, doesn't it?
Yeah, plus there's a statement on the bottom that says to be determined by the planning board on a case-by-case basis.
So...
And we didn't apply, I mean, we'd gotten the letter when we got here to go historic and I'm like, no, I don't want to be restricted to too much, so...
Where's it saying 22.9 that...
Some, whatever article that Tony had given me, it was replacement in kind is what he was, he was going on. But, I mean, there's only two windows in the whole house that have the original fully...
These windows are actually...
I appreciate you coming in here, I don't have any problem with it, I'm just wondering.
It's only a couple with the original.
Because we were told we had to, because we were in village district. And we currently have white windows with no painting in it for the most part.
So it was 22.9 that was highlighted by the, by the architectural design of buildings.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it basically says, come here, show us, that you're trying to keep it...
You show us you get...
Compatible.
Other buildings in the village, in the center of district, village district with black sashes and black windows, so...
Yeah.
I think you're, in my opinion, you're...
Considering we're not changing any structure, we shouldn't even need a building permit for it.
Yeah, no.
Building permits ain't touching an opening. Usually most towns are, when it's touching any opening, even if it's like-for-like, some towns require us to pull permits, so...
Anything I could see, if you did the siding, you may have to pull permit to change this with the vinyl side, but that's just nothing. Changing one for the other replacement.
The FYI of the vinyl siding, I mean, we've allowed that to...
Oh, okay, all right, well, I just wanted to get that out of the way tonight, you know, thinking...
On more than one occasion.
Thinking ahead.
I mean, Harry, whether it be Zou building down there, we had put vinyl siding on it.
Okay, okay.
Same, same district.
Okay. All right, good to know. That keeps us...
As far as I'm concerned. Yep, I'm good. Since it's up to, since it says to be determined by the planning board, I guess we've got to make a...
Motion.
A motion and vote. So who's going to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, we allow the window upgrade to be black frames and sashes as proposed by the...
How about a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Correct.
And...
I second that.
Vinyl siding of a similar profile to the existing siding.
Yeah. And you seconded it?
Correct.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Can you write down your cell phone number so next time I get locked out of here, I can, I can call you up? Have you let me in?
I could do his call, Jack would run the back line, lock, lock him in.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
I can't get in, but they're still calling me for power out at least at the stone building at 2:00 in the morning. I'm still on the call list for that. I get three calls on that during the snowstorm. The power is out at the stone building, yeah, so what do you want me to do? The power's out of my house.
So I have a question about this. Even though the, the design issue is addressed here, this isn't technically a historic overlay.
Not a village district.
Yeah.
Right.
So if it's...
Not a historic overlay.
So there's no parameters pertaining to color, no parameters at all, other than what we...
Not like a historic district.
It just says, shall be architecturally compatible with the historic building details in those districts.
Right.
So if, so if it kind of matches, if there's other buildings...
So how does that, how does that, did that, did this issue get addressed when the new middle school was built?
It didn't, they resent.
Schools exempt, towns exempt from our, town is exempt from our own regulations.
Well, you know, another interesting thing is the West Center Store. I mean, if that threw anything out of...
Well, the old schoolhouse has a black and yellow color scheme by me. And that didn't come to us. So it's...
Oh, the little one?
Yeah, the old Riverside School.
Next item on the agenda is Pine Island Realty LLC.
Yeah, we have an email. They asked for an extension, they'd like to rework the seven two months. Because the lawyer and we're still reviewing or they're still looking at a cemetery in there.
Oh.
To be till the end of May?
Something like that. I...
Plus the snow's out there, what are you going to do? If he finds someone to go look at it?
They're working anyway, I go by there the other day, it's all dug out and they're, and they're working, roads plowed.
I would say by May, you could thumb up and...
But I thought we, the last time, the, one of the last times they were in, they said, not to further with the application, just come and apply after they do their research.
Well, I think the attorney is probably doing a quiet title and that's why he needs more information.
I thought he would, he pulled his application before bringing it back in again, but...
The only problem I have with continuing them two more months is I was really hoping he'd come in and clean up what he's done because he doesn't have a SWIP permit, he doesn't have a shoreline permit and therefore he needs an AOT permit. He doesn't have any of those, to my knowledge.
What do you want me to come back? Do you want to see that all cleaned up before they take him back?
I wouldn't, I don't know how he's going to clean it up without getting a permit.
What do you want me to relay that?
Looking to submit the status of his, of his state required permits?
State and EPA.
Yeah.
Tony said something to him one time like a year ago about it, before he applied. I would just like to, I think we should let him know that the board thinks he should, if the board agrees with me. Should make sure he's not within 250 feet of Daniel's Lake, which is governed by an elevation, not by the high watermark. Because if he's within 250 feet, he needs a shoreline permit. If he's within 250 feet and disturbs more than 50,000 square feet, he needs an alteration terrain permit.
I didn't take shore land in school, so...
Pardon me?
I didn't take shore land in school, so I'm trying.
If he has disturbed ground within 250 feet of the, of Daniel's Lake...
Just governed by, what did you say?
It's, it's, it has an elevation to it. I don't know, I don't know what it is, but there is an elevation that determines the high watermark. The reference sign is by, by an elevation and... So if he did, if he disturbed anything within 250 feet of Daniel's Lake, he needs a shoreline permit. If he's disturbed more than 50,000 square feet and some of it is within 250 feet of Daniel's Lake, he needs an alteration terrain permit. If he disturbed more than a, an acre, he needs a stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Is that, because of the stream that probably comes down there close to the border of that lot, oh, and underneath 114 by the bridge, yeah.
Yes, the elevation.
Does that come, does that, is that considered part of Daniel's Lake or is that...
From personal knowledge, yes, it goes the whole way up to the road that crosses Beauvaires into Beaufort. That's where the elevation changes.
Floods all the time.
Yes.
Into the swamp, up behind, all clear.
Yes.
He needs to prove to you that he doesn't need a shoreline, an AOT and a stormwater pollution?
Or submit the permits.
Or submit the permits, yes.
Right, but he needs to prove to you that he doesn't need those.
Yes.
Or submit permits, that's easier.
Yes.
That's what I was trying to write.
Yes. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Need a motion?
Well, first we've got to open the hearing and then, so I'm going to open the hearing and then we're going to have to make a motion to continue it for two months till a date's certain, obviously.
Let's open the hearing, before we do that though, let's talk about these other permits, then we'll continue.
Okay, I thought we just did. Anyway, it's open. I've opened a hearing for the Pine Island Realty Trust.
So we have a request for a two-month extension.
Yes, we do.
They've already been extended for three months?
I believe it was two months, one month the first time, then two more, and now two more, yes.
Yep.
They put it what, the 25th of May?
Yes. And they haven't submitted anything other than requests for extensions.
They've submitted a right to no request to us looking for information on the cemetery.
Okay.
It was while I was gone, another issue, so I haven't gotten all the information from downstairs yet. That's why I'm here, supposed to be here tonight, but I didn't get a chance to do it.
Okay. The, um, and they're actively doing something in there.
Yes, they're actively doing something.
Yeah, I see excavators, like I said, went by yesterday, you can see they've been, they've plowed it, they've been in there and it's like they grab, put some gravel in there.
So they're actively doing something in there that we need to see their permits.
How about if we, uh... How about if we continue until April 13th and have him come in and talk about those other permits he may or may not need? Before we just plain continue for two months?
That's what I want. That's the way to do it.
To discuss permitting?
Yeah, the, the various, state and federal permits.
So I move we grant the extension, not two months, but only one month to April 13th. Well, it's not even one month, it's three weeks.
Yep.
Three weeks to April 13th to discuss... Three weeks to April thirteenth, to discuss state and federal permitting.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? So, he's got till four thirteen?
I didn't mean to take the phone on you, but the two gentlemen that were sitting here was for the lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
And Tony talked to him, because one of the lots is less than five acres. And he was making it more non-conforming instead of an equal spot, so he's asked whether they pay the fees to continue it, he's gonna submit a new plan for next month. That Stan Higgins' analysis are there.
So, we just. He's submitting a new application, or he's not?
He's just gonna put through a new plan, I have the application, but the plan makes one lot, and one off.
So, then I'll open the lot line adjustment for William and Gina Stevens, Judith and Frank Richardson. At thirty-four Dudley Brook Road and eight Dudley Brook Road, tax map one oh three, one oh seven lot three, and four oh four lot eighteen in the ag zone. And we have a crest, request to be continued for a month? Twenty-seven?
Make a motion, we continue this till April twenty-seventh?
Second. Do we have a second? Chuck seconds. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
So, by process of elimination, you would drop here for two conceptual, one on the Cully Road and one on.
No, I don't, Jock just left. Oh, okay.
He's getting his, he's getting his vigil aids.
I will start with Emerson Turnpike.
Emerson Turnpike.
That's a private, uh, I have.
I heard about this.
Yeah, I think I talked to the board last fall, maybe about, and, um.
You don't remember that, but that's okay. Oh, jeez. Nailed together.
Look at the, look at Nelson, his last lot up there, uh, on it. So, here, uh, new block, kind of looks the, uh, kind of fun, but, uh, he wants to break out a lot for his son. Um, Emerson is a private road, I haven't found a, I didn't talk to him, I think, uh. Right now, if you hold that. We've got probably, hello? In the last, continued driveway, I don't know, I'll find a different route to get up to his property. So, there's things I don't know how to handle, uh, private road.
So, it's like, where this existing garage is here, like that test, where the roads?
That's pretty much where it's, it's starting to get here, yeah, it's accessible, you can drive up the property, they have a lot landing up there, um, there's an old foundation, um, it's a little too much to get up there right now, but, um, it is passable. But, uh, last, uh, last guy up there, uh, is where the maintenance kind of stops. From what we can see everywhere, it's about twenty-five feet wide, chucked up and down the road, there's a series of houses.
Oh, six houses on it?
This is David.
One.
Uh, four houses on the road. Now, and, uh, we take care of it amongst themselves. What, uh, David's looking to do is, again, break off a twelve-acre lot for his son. And just need some direction, a way to go, what, uh, what to do, I assume they're going to zoning, because they're on a private road. They're gonna have to go over the firewalls, get a look at it.
And the lot already has zero furniture on a classic road, class five road, right?
It's a private road.
Yeah, it's not even class.
That's what I said, it has zero furniture on a class five road.
Okay, you're right.
Yep.
Zero, as do the four before.
Right. Are you planning on doing any improvements to the road up to that last house?
Well, I guess we're looking for some input from the board, I'd like not to, uh. It, it, you know, it's passable, they, they get up there, get by just fine now, um, but you're adding one more house to it, um.
Right, if I'm. Well, I was just gonna say, I mean, worst, worst-case scenario, we gotta at least think of. I don't know, we gotta think of what fire trucks passing and all that kind of stuff.
Pretty wide road, it's existing, that they have, it's stuff right now.
As far as like gravel, where they can have access to it, you know, it's muddy.
Gravel, and they recently put over, um, ground asphalt over the top of that, and rolled that.
How far up past the last house is this, is the lot?
About five hundred and fifty feet.
Five hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah, to get to the, to the lot line.
Yeah, the next five hundred and fifty feet, that would have, whatever the board.
Actually, you need a variance for that.
Yep.
You need two variances, right, one for using a private road, and one for subdividing on a private road.
And one for building on a private road. When he gets there.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you get the road improvements done, then they can do the, the permits to build.
How long is the road from, is it River Road?
Yeah, that I don't know, uh, but I don't know, it's a bit of a, a distance, it's a poke, it's gotta be a couple thousand feet, is it, or?
Probably fifteen hundred feet.
You got that?
Yeah.
We haven't gotten that far yet, though.
Well, we're not there, starting point.
We're getting there.
Not even there.
I don't know where it is, I just have it in my hand, I can't get it off. I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah, I'd say probably around fifteen hundred feet, maybe, you know, seventeen, eighteen hundred, but that's pushing, it varies.
So, what's your questions?
What are you, little boy?
Do you want the subdivision on the primary road?
Just a question, how does it do it?
I did talk to Tony, he said to come talk to planning.
I think you gotta go to ZBA.
Well, he's gotta go to the ZBA.
Yeah, yeah.
I was told to come to planning first, get directions, go to ZBA.
Do you need a deed, that you can use that Emerson turnpike?
I actually looked at your deed, and it says, yes, you can use the Emerson turnpike, and it's twenty-five, I think it said twenty-five feet wide in deed.
I believe so.
Yep. That's, you know, how are you gonna fit any kind of a? Twenty-five's tight.
Yep, yes, it is.
If you're gonna have a.
And, you know, there's walls in there, too.
Right.
It's not like it's open.
I see that, I see walls, yes.
It's only twenty-five feet of road.
It's, it's one lane and walls in the ditch.
I would think.
Who owns Emerson turnpike?
That's my next question, I don't know, doesn't really matter.
We don't really know.
Kind of in the gray area, some say, way back when, that I own half, and the Mathissons, Tim Matheson owns half. That, that's what we've always assumed over the last fifty, seventy-five years, whatever, you know.
How wide is the driveway below that garage?
Uh, the road itself?
Okay, road, driveway, sure, road, basically, it's a driveway, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
Private driveway, private road.
Private road.
What scale are we, fifty, forty?
Forty, fifty.
Used to like the log.
Wow, you even brought this up.
Really?
Yeah.
I just can't use it, can't see the numbers.
I can't either. Fifteen feet wide?
It's, it's not, it's narrow, and, and honestly, we can have a seat without smell.
What?
It's fairly wide when the snow, when the snow's snowy, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but it's not travel pattern, it's just wide.
It's called, it becomes maintenance, it's plowed and widened up.
Where's River Road?
That's a.
Down here.
Oh, down there.
Yeah.
That scales about twelve, thirteen feet.
This is somebody proposing.
Towards the bottom than it is the further you go up.
The wall scale about thirty-two. Isn't that a strange number for walls? So, I would, I would think, worst case, and I'm not saying that I would go for this, and I'm not saying zoning worth should go for. But I think you're gonna have to get grades under ten percent from River Road.
The whole run?
I think so.
The whole thing would have to be upgraded, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I don't know what.
NFPA standards are ten percent.
That's the existing condition of the existing situation.
I can't help that.
No.
You're making an existing condition more non-conforming by adding more.
Plus, by adding that, they have to meet the, what the road width requirements.
Well, even if you get, even if you stick with the driveway width requirement, you gotta go sixteen feet all clear. And I think every six or eight hundred feet, you gotta have a place for a fire truck to pull off.
Yeah, a turnoff, so they can meet.
And so, a fire truck can go by them?
Yeah, I thought it was four hundred, I.
I'm guessing, I. I can tell you that.
Every five hundred.
We did, we did on Low Road, or, uh.
You thought it was four hundred, I thought it was six hundred, he thought it was five hundred?
I thought it was five.
I think it's four, too.
Maybe it's eleven?
Yeah, who knows?
I think it's four, too.
Maybe it's two thousand, you don't have to worry about it.
All right, so what, they have pullouts?
And, I mean, pullouts, but they're wide spots in the road, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Tractor enough to nose in, just.
You're talking fifty-foot-long pullout?
Right, yep.
That must be it. This isn't gonna have it.
You must own the right side of that road, all the way up?
Yes, sir.
You think Tim owns the left side all the way up?
Um, yeah, well, there's something like, is that Matheson used to, when he subdivided out lots on the left-hand side going up? That's where the homes are built.
So, which one was the last one to be sold?
Well, they haven't sold, they're all in the family, the last one is the very last house.
The one that Deb owned, that?
Um, Nick Matheson owned it, he passed away, Russell owned it, and then he sold it to, um, his niece.
Yeah, if the driveway's over six, eight hundred feet long, it has to have a pull-off, four hundred feet.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
It must be fifty feet long, and create a travel width of twenty feet at the.
I mean, when he created the lots, he must've gone to the stone wall with the lot lines, right?
Yeah, that's the problem, we're seeing.
So, probably the, the last one he owned, that. Still owns, the last one. What, I'm trying to think, which one owned the, owned half the road? You think it's all of them, or just the last?
No, Tim's, I believe the Mathissons itself, they were not, it was not deeded out to the road, it was deeded to just the wall.
Yeah, so it'd be the walls with just that strip of land in front of them, realistically, it's less left over.
Or you go the old boundary law principle, that any, if you mention the road, it goes to centerline. And it doesn't matter who owns the road, anyway, you have an easement over it, so you can do whatever you want to.
Yeah, but if it's only twenty-five feet.
Well, yeah, that's the issue, right there.
That's what I'm trying to think, if he needed to make it, get it even bigger, what he, how would he go about it?
So, you're saying that I think that we need to widen that road the whole distance, is what you, what you're saying?
Up until you have to put the, the next house in, beyond that, you don't have to.
You'll have to do right to the cul-de-sac, Jack.
What's that?
You have to do right to the cul-de-sac.
We don't need a cul-de-sac, you can have a hammerhead or a tier.
Whatever, Jack, whatever they come with.
Well, I thought, I thought on a private road, that we just, we went through before, that as long as they did it, and we just did it on a class six road. Cause the selectmen went up and looked at Jewett Road on the other end, um, out by Fair and Pond, that they had to just widen it and keep it up to specs, up until you get to, by where? Just beyond where that house was, that they put it, and then other than that, they didn't have to do anymore, cause they weren't gonna be using it.
Well, yeah, but in this case, he's using.
The whole thing.
Two thousand feet, or whatever it is.
You're gonna use the whole thing, that whole road's gonna be.
Well, it's, it's access to the lot, it's the last.
It's the only access to get in.
Yeah, okay, so then, yeah, then you'll have to make it spec all the way to the end with either a hammerhead, or like you said, or.
When, when you say.
So, you're trying to say that I can't subdivide unless I build that into a town road?
Well.
Is that what you're saying?
The specs, they have to bring it up to class five.
Without a variance, yes. To be blunt. Yes. But that's why you need a variance.
Then I might as well put in forty houses then, if I'm gonna build the road.
Well, there's the specs on private roads about putting subdivisions into them, so.
I'll subdivide the whole thing up into house lots.
Well, one option you do have, Dave, is.
Alls we wanna do is build my son a house at the top of the hill.
I understand.
Been paying taxes on that land for eighty years.
As a lot, and you can still use it as a lot.
Right.
And also needs a lot for him to build at the top.
Yeah, but you're changing it by doing that.
Right, you're changing the use of the lot.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, what am I supposed to do, just hold on to that land until the day I die, not do anything with it? You know?
I, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say, if you got a variance, you wouldn't have to do that, did I, did I understand you correctly?
If you got a variance, you would not have to make it a town road. The question is, what, what standard would it have to be built to?
Okay.
That's the huge ninety-nine.
So, you can't leave it just the way that they have, and me, and my next section to my son's lot, five hundred and fifty, change it, change that?
If I was king, no, but I'm not king.
We, we can't tell you, you can do that.
All, all we can.
I mean, because it doesn't meet zoning requirements.
And we knew it didn't meet zoning requirements, that's why we're here, is to get some direction for the guys.
Yeah. So, that's why you need to go to the ZBA, if you don't wanna do that.
And that's just the road update, upgrade, we're talking.
You need two, you need, yeah, but you need, you don't have furniture on a class five road.
Correct.
So, you need a variance for that.
Correct.
You need a variance to use the private road. To access.
So, we need a variance to subdivide, a variance for access, or for a building permit.
Right.
Correct.
You're still gonna have to do work to the road.
Well, that's up to the zoning board, Jack.
It's, I know, but I mean.
That's not, that's not, that's not a decision, I mean, we'll get a choice.
We've passed some of that in our regulations, too, for private roads, didn't we just go through that a while back?
When he does the building permit part.
Yes.
We can make recommendations to the selectmen, before the selectmen grant them the permission to use the private road.
Yeah.
So, we need the two variances, basically just to sub, we need a variance just to subdivide.
Right.
First of all, just to create a lot, we need a variance.
Right.
Then, for the building permit, you need a second variance to build on a, on a, a private road.
Right.
And then when he pulls his building permit.
He, he needs permission from the selectmen.
To improve the.
To use it.
To use it, but who's gonna govern over improvements?
That, there's a chart.
Technically, the selectmen, but they're supposed to ask us for recommendations.
In the road agent, probably.
In the road agent, yes.
Fireworks, the board of fireworks, cause of the turnout.
Right, they're gonna be able to be involved, so.
But how steep is that road?
I think this is the worst part.
I mean, this part.
Oh, down there, yeah.
I, I think this is the steepest part, from that last garage up to you all in.
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Thirteen?
Then you got a little thirteen-foot stretch.
Yeah, it's not too much.
Right in front of that garage. And twelve, twelve point eight in the very beginning of the profile.
Yeah, about fifty feet of a thirteen point two percent pitch.
Yeah, thirteen two point two can be.
So, I admit, that upper section does need a lot of, of roadwork.
Dave, um, the existing garage.
Hi?
I, I wanted to ask you, the, the existing garage, you're, you're familiar with it. You own this lot, you own this lot, don't you?
I own the lot on the right-hand side, across from the existing garage.
Okay, so, that's a nice one, you know, you know, push comes to shove, you probably saved a lot of money if you had your son build a house down in here.
Well, you can't, you're still gonna have to upgrade the road all the way from.
Not this section.
Oh, I know that, but that's right in the middle of my pasture, and we were trying to get up towards the top of the hill.
Still factoring that?
Yes, it's still all pasture on the right-hand side, I still have the cows and the horses out there.
How big is this lot?
Twenty-five acres.
Just like twenty-five.
That's a nice lot.
And the other one at the top of the hill was fifty.
You got another field here.
Um, there's just a landing area at the top, right up here.
Right.
It's a large grassy, right here, and this is all field right here.
Right, yeah, right.
This is all field, all the way down through.
It's nice.
But I don't own, down to the very. Down to the very bottom by the road, because there's another house, used to be Kenny Nelson's house. Nancy, not sure what her last name, Christian, I believe it is, owns the last place, build a road.
My suggestion would be to find out what, to draw a profile of the whole road, A. And then go to Board of Fireworks, because you're gonna have, if you can't get. More than mickey, if you get the variance. I can't say that, I'm not gonna say that. I don't wanna try, I don't want my, what I say to influences zoning board, or what we say to influences zoning board. I would go to the, I would go to the Board of Fireworks first and show them what you got, because no matter what, you're gonna have to have their approval. The ZBA should certainly seek their input, and I know the. Selectmen and the planning board will certainly seek their input.
Well, you can wait till next March and we'll be able to firewards.
Could be that too. Yeah, that's all, yeah, next March, they're all done.
Yeah. They're probably gonna be like lame ducks until then.
I don't know. Then I would go to the zoning board.
Fireworks get input from the fire.
I mean, they, they got, they got a, they're gonna have to.
Yep.
You're gonna have to get around NFPA requirements to get up there. And NFPA is gonna require twelve-foot wide, sixteen-foot clear.
Some trail that's up there with that.
Which you probably already have that.
You don't know trail?
I have no idea.
It's got the width, it's the, the sixteen-foot.
Trim out some branches and you probably got it.
I'm not sure.
There's a powerful pole here.
I'm, I'm talking about this part.
Yeah, the rest of it.
Looks like the last one.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, so start with fireworks, they still meet once a month, or?
They still, well, that's lots, I'm sure.
They just met the other, second Monday of the month, yeah. On the other ones that I've seen, the zoning board has issued a saying that the class six road or whatever has to be upgraded to meet the driveway specs. The bad thing about that is the driveway specs say nothing about the base.
So how many lots do you have that, that touch each other there, Dave?
Pardon?
How many lots do you have there that touch each other, two currently?
I have two lots, yes, I have one on the right at twenty-five acre parcel, and then I have, um, four, it's forty-nine point something at the very top.
Just something to think about, if you did some kind of a lot line adjustment, still had two lots when you're done.
Yeah, but he wants to save his field.
I know.
And he wants to get up here.
He could, he could put his house over here, do a lot line adjustment, right to here, all the, have this all one big lot, do something else over there.
Just change it, and you still need to build this road to get there for.
But he doesn't need, but he doesn't need a, doesn't need a variance to subdivide then.
We still, oh, different lot line adjustment.
Just a thought.
So what were you saying exactly, you mind if I come up?
Yeah, come on up. Lot, lot adjustment where this, no, he wants the house here, not here?
You'd have to move the house over here.
If you put the house here, you could do a lot line adjustment, make this area part of this lot.
And have this lot left over, but it's still part, it's still that original lot, but it's smaller.
Yeah, cause this lot, this.
This lot.
Is all still, yes, that's all of the forty-nine acre parcel.
So instead of that, you take this line and make this part of this lot. So you still own two lots.
And this lot would be standing by itself, and then this would all be one big lot.
I assume you're talking about that lot and that lot?
Yeah, cause I, exactly, so you just, so you wanna do a lot, I think I should do a.
Lot line adjustment where that becomes part of this.
Yeah, but it solves this variance on.
Don't need to do a subdivision.
Not having any frontage.
Then that's fine.
You're still gonna get up there to build.
Yeah, you still have to do, even if you do that, you still have to.
Oh, yeah, but you don't need a variance for, for no frontage on a class six road for subdivision.
Which is gonna be, I think, the hardest variance to get.
That's gonna be a difficult, I would hope, difficult variance to get. You know what I mean?
Well, difficulty here.
That's a lot line adjustment.
Lots about difficulty.
Pardon?
So we know lots about difficulty.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I, I see what you're saying, you're just swapping the line around, that's just.
So you're not creating another lot, so you don't need, don't need a variance?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were just trying to get it so that this is, cause he had, he would have a view from here. Down across the fields, and the house would be right, right beside the fields, the pasture fields. Because I know the Mathesons, originally their parcel over here, I believe there's one other lot that has been subdivided here that eventually. They planned on, but the, one of the sons, he never did build, the last one right there.
I think they just looked around all the other ones in front, according to the tax map, just kinda goes back down the railroad. Um, I just, I guess it's something we could discuss, but we're still gonna.
Still need a variance to build on a.
On a, um.
Private road.
Private road, and then still the up, upgrade issue of a private road.
Yes.
What fireworks say, so, so.
Alright, so we should visit with the fireworks first. I can talk to Dave about possible doing that. And what about direction on the road, on the improvements to the road, that's selectman's office? You, you said it's, uh.
The ZBA is gonna weigh in on that too, cause that's where you're gonna go first.
So it's not a ZBA still?
Yeah.
Well, second stop.
The, the only reason I say, say fireworks first is that that's gonna be your.
They're gonna be the driving force on what you have to do.
NFPA is gonna be your driving force.
Yes.
I know that the NFPA says ten percent, but the fireworks aren't allowed to waive that.
Yeah, they, they can go up to.
Where's it? I think it's fifteen.
Twelve, like.
Oh, right there.
Twenty-five and thirty, like fifty, fif-.
I think they've got the fifteen percent.
Fifty-five feet or something where it's.
See, I can change on the upper half, we can change the.
And it looks like he's got room, this is six point eight, this is nine point five.
You know what I mean?
He could probably.
Because what it is over the, the grades that they're running right now is over the past fifty years, that upper half of the road is eroded down and washed down. Three feet lower than it originally was, you know, it was. Three feet higher.
That, that could kinda be tweaked and reshaped and come, it, it looks like some give and take in that section, that that could be brought.
Yeah, it's not like you're ten percent to it, ten percent after it, you got some.
Yeah, dips.
Yeah.
Yeah, rises and dips.
Cause we figured we'd have to fill that all in, you know, you gotta.
Alright.
I, I think the turnaround is gonna be an issue, and so is the. Pull off, I should say.
I can make those happen.
Uh, it's gonna be pretty tight to have a twenty-foot pull off and twenty-five-foot right away.
I own that property on the right-hand side.
Every four hundred feet.
Yep.
From there to here. If you didn't own this.
Can make it happen.
Okay.
That could be done.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, start with fireworks.
Perfect, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Want these back up?
You still some, you want these? You want, you want two? I throw, I throw a lot of paperweight too, so. I made eight prints, I had all these people come in for a meeting.
Only needed two.
No, the wetland scientist, me, the owner, the owner's buyer, the ebed, ebed dude, the farmer, so I made all these prints. Owner called up, well, both the assistant firemen, so he just got called out to fire, I'm getting some kind of infusion done for my cancer treatment, so we're just gonna do this by phone, is that okay? Let me call you back when the wetland scientist gets here, but yeah, that's alright.
What is this next one?
Are you ready?
No.
He's over there writing, making notes and such.
Okay, I'm ready, what's next?
That's gonna be easy, right?
Yeah, that's what they say.
Yeah. This is on Colton Road. And the plans are awful hard to read, so I tried coloring up a little bit. So you just bought this piece of property. Wanted to know, I was gonna subdivide it, um, we can go with the large lots, we're in an agriculture zone.
Long as it's ten acres, paved road.
Yep, okay, so we need that requirement, one of them, uh, but we do have slug of wetlands on this property.
Yeah, you know.
Set up about, we're gonna have the crossing in the front, and this one here, we'll probably have to cross this one, I'm not sure what it is. Uh, but we came here because we're gonna have to go to zoning to, um. Uh, work within the, uh, the buffer, the twenty-five foot buffer, so we're gonna have to get a variance for that. And we're gonna have to go to the wetlands board to get, uh, our crossings, there's no other way access to this lot except for coming in through that way. This lot is both steep and wet. Not so much on this end, more wet on this end, steep in the back.
Yeah, Hughes, Hughes Brook is down here somewhere.
Yeah, way down south.
So is this.
How far up Colby Road is it?
Is this Jim Dow's property?
Yes.
Okay.
I know where I am. You've seen my plans around this.
Was it Brookshire?
Here. That's Brookshire, that's Durgan's, that's Jim Dow's.
So this is about.
No, this is Jim Dow's.
So this is about some open space at Brookshire, this, the open space at Brookshire all right here, right?
This is the open space at Brookshire, this is the open space of Durgan, which the subdivision is no longer valid.
Right, right.
So this is the open space.
Yeah, okay.
This is Jim Dow, I'm sorry about that, that.
So this one here, I think the only thing we need of zoning, I think is just to work in the wetlands buffer.
And the wetland permit.
Yeah, the wetlands permit.
I'm gonna ask what these cross at, you know, is, out of curiosity.
I think this two slopes are ledge.
Okay. You think? I understand.
Yeah.
I understand completely.
Stupid wetland hatches, and I keep turning them off, and whoever works on the drawing last turns them back on.
Could be ledge.
Yeah, these.
But he's showing buffers around, so I think they're wetlands.
Yeah, a little, little took fall.
You don't need buffers around ledge, so yeah, it's probably all wetlands.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of wetlands out there.
Somebody was in years ago with the same problem, same lot.
The same lot?
Yeah, a long, long time ago, I recall it. I guess they didn't do anything, could you?
Guess not.
I don't remember that, I remember Durgan, but I don't remember that one, this one. I, the only thing I can see is you need a, you need a wetland crossing and variance for the buffer.
Yep.
You get the wetland permit, the variance should be simple. It should, I shouldn't speak for the board, but it should be. Uh, the only thing else is you're gonna need a shared driveway agreement, obviously.
I mean, way, way across that one by the road, looks like about the narrowest spot you can cross it, so.
Yeah, it's not the best grade wise, uh, they actually cross it for the logging, you know, of course, they kinda left that in place, but it's, it's more impact, so we're. We're looking at, um, the narrowest, less impact.
Well, is it, is it, well, just a culvert will solve that problem?
Hopefully just a culvert, yeah. For your driveway easements, do you guys have a width you like? I think I use forty on that one.
Yeah, there is one in the regulations. Forty's plenty.
Yeah, not, not, I'm just talking about for the easement, just the case bowls and stuff like that.
Thirty is what the regulations say at the, at the opening.
If they build in the right place, twenty-five is okay with me. Then you gotta make sure they build in the right place. Yeah, and you have two hundred feet of view and all.
Well, it's the same thing, this is over, I think it's over four hundred feet, so we're gonna be, um, pull out.
Yeah, you pull out someplace in here, another one back in here, and turn around someplace, turn around over there someplace.
Two lots. No, they're gonna make it two lots, right now it's one.
Yeah.
Right, that's what, that's what he's trying to do, is make it two lots. There's nothing out there now.
No permit for that.
Nothing.
Okay.
No buildings. Fewer trees.
Looks like I don't remember one.
Yeah, this is pretty much junk, but he's got a nice spot here, a nice spot here.
Why would you want two lots? Just cause you're here. I don't see problems. Anybody else have any issues?
No.
Questions? What are all these rebars for?
I think they're trees, I think the symbols are too small. Rebars, I don't know. I don't know.
I think I do.
It was Durgan.
Didn't have a Bedford design cap on them, did they? Good? Do they have a true engineering cap on them?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I don't have any issues, that's all I see. Anybody else? Nobody's saying anything.
No.
You're gonna remember this conversation?
Yeah.
Yes.
No issues, Pat? There are no issues, Pat, most importantly, right?
He's gonna steal the plans, we have no record of it.
Alright, thank you, so I guess we won't see you for a couple months.
I don't, I don't know what your workload is.
Well, I mean, by the time we go to everybody else, they'll back at you.
Well, that one at least, yeah, me or one of them, yeah.
There's no sense in making an application either till we get that wetlands process. Alright, I'm ready to.
Thank you, good luck. So what else we got, Naomi?
Can we look at the grant for that invest NH?
Yes.
Did that get grant?
It's eighteen pages.
Did that get, um.
We got approved.
Approved?
Eighteen pages, just the corporate's, kind of the number of charts that you guys all saw.
Anything particular I should read?
Well, no, it doesn't, it's not committing us, I mean, I think it's a starting list to commit to work with that. Right?
That was my concern, was to be committed to work with.
So you guys, what we submitted said where can pick their own, it's indicated several times in there.
Yeah. You can pick from their list, or you can pick your own.
Right.
What's the WMPUC?
Where, master plan update.
State committee.
We have such a thing?
No, but you have to create one, you have to create one as part of this grant.
Okay.
Or somebody does.
Well, I know. So March to August, we are to be data collection by where's chosen consultant.
March to August?
Yes.
So we gotta find somebody.
Yes.
But haven't signed and sent that back yet either, so.
Is it with Mark? Who's that? I would certainly. Like a.
Second opinion?
What's the word I want, request for qualifications?
Yeah.
Or proposal? Do we have a list of?
So we can either.
You have.
Pick someone, or we can pick someone from their list, or Southern New Hampshire Planning? We'll do it.
I don't know if they submitted us with a list of people to do it, or, you have a list in your head. I got a list in my cellphone too. Because I actually pulled a feeler out there to see who does this kind of stuff, well, three months ago. There's somebody in Plymouth that was recommended, I don't remember his name right now. Mark Fugere was recommended, and you had one with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. So really by... May, geez. We're looking at this scope of work thing. Have to have something, we have to, data collection between now and March.
August.
Yeah, sorry, I was already reading down here, between March and August twenty-three. Then the community engagement starts from March until July twenty-four. Meetings with us between now and December twenty-four.
Sounds like we're gonna find somebody pretty quick.
Yep.
So if we're gonna go with somebody else, gonna put out... Son of an RFP.
Well, we can do that, but all of the dollar figures are in here, and that's what the money is...
I mean, if these people are outsiders, so they have a different price, you know?
Right, and we don't have the funds for that, right? So if we're gonna look for someone else, it's not a request for proposal, it's can you work within the scope of this grant? Um, and Southern New Hampshire has a list of people to, that are available to do this, or we can pick our own. But it's not an RFP process with this grant.
Why can't we submit, why, why can't we ask for RFPs?
We can.
Yeah.
Okay.
You gotta be looking for someone who can work for these figures, right?
Oh, yeah, within their criteria, then, okay, they don't...
Yeah, if they all come in with twenty-five grand, they're gonna get the job.
I mean, do that with any RFP, because it's not in your budget, you say, we want this to work.
And, and looking at the timeframe here, what's the, what's the, how timely is an RFP process? I don't know, what's the usual opening and closing parameters?
If you give them a week, notify them, give them a week to submit a proposal.
Well, yeah, but yes and no.
If they've done this type of work before, then they, then anyway.
Where does it say in here what chapters we're revising?
I'm looking at the one that's, um, that was submitted, that still has some things highlighted, but... I think that's to be determined by the...
No, 'cause we had a list of what we wanted in there.
Here we go.
And they came back and said, you can't do this section and that section.
It's, I see here, I don't have any page numbers, 'cause this is the one that you sent that was submitted, I don't, I don't have the final... But it says Ware's Chosen Consultant with Guidance from Ware Master Plan Update Committee, it says Chapter Two, Chapter Three, Chapter Four, Chapter Five, Six, Seven, Eleven, and Twelve. Would be the ones that are updated master plan chapters.
Which ones?
Chapter Two, Regional Setting. Chapter Three, Community Vision, Goals and Objectives. Chapter Four, Population and Demographic Trends. Chapter Five, Housing. Chapter Six, Economic Development. Seven, Community Facilities. Eleven, Existing and Future Land Use. And Twelve, Implementation Strategies. Those are the ones that are synthesis of input and updated master plan chapters in the copy that I have of the grant that was submitted for grant application.
We had to knock out a couple of chapters, Naomi? We had to knock out a couple of chapters out of that list?
Yeah, I was trying to find it.
I mean, it sounds like it's designed to get something on next year's warrant.
No.
Oh, no, nothing goes in a warrant.
This is a, there's more grant money that can be applied for, once we get that part done, we can figure out where to go from there.
Yeah, this is just updates at the, the master plan related to housing.
Yeah, we didn't, I thought they said that wasn't necessarily my contract. I don't know. They said, yeah, but they, we don't really have to do that, I believe.
That's what we have to use this money for.
That's what we have to use the money for, yeah. Update the master plan.
If it's a specified grant, you have to use that, you know, whatever the grant specifies that's to use the money for.
Well, certain chapters of the, not all, not the entire master plan.
Yeah, so here at the very top of this, and I don't know if you've got this, what, Eric, you, the copy you have says this. Enclose plea filing that town of Ware's application for needs analysis and planning grants, supporting an update to the O five Ware Master Plan to identify sections that are related to her impact upon housing development and drafting revisions to those master plan sections. That's what the, the intro to this says this is for. Oh, and also conduct successful community engagement to support the development and adoption of master plan revisions.
Well, we gotta give them monthly reports, that's interesting.
I think the person who's doing this does the monthly reports, yeah.
Does the planning board chairman appoint this master plan committee?
Yes. I can do that. You volunteering?
No. I'm assuming it's kind of step one of this whole thing, isn't it, other than sign the thing?
I think step one is gonna be getting a consultant, yeah. It doesn't say anywhere in here that I can see about what chapters we're working on.
Yours doesn't?
No.
Okay.
'Cause that's what they, this is what, what's, what's sent back.
This is a grant agreement.
This is a grant agreement, it doesn't... I know they remember they came back once and asked Naomi to get rid of a couple of chapters, and she had to re-sign it. That was the final application that was sent?
Yeah, I don't think that's the final application, though.
No, that's the first.
Goes as first?
This is what I got, I printed out when Naomi said, hey, this has to be done by the, by tomorrow, close of business.
Right.
Uh, you guys have to take up your meeting today. That's what I have, I didn't see what back and forth resulted in. 'Cause they were willing, the committee was willing to tell us, hey, you're, here's where your grant application may be deficient. So, I'm assuming there was some back and forth with Naomi at that point.
Drug-free workplace?
Supposed to be.
Time all count?
I don't know. Looks like a bunch of crap to me, big boil plate, you know? Yeah, debarment, suspension, write to cancel, and all that kind of stuff. Not gonna discriminate. I've done something about it, what, we've been...
I guess we need a copy of the same application Naomi did.
I don't have it with me, I was trying to find it.
Okay. That way we know what exactly we're supposed to apply for. Probably need that signed application to send it with the RFP, so we... They know what we apply for, too, 'cause this really doesn't...
I was thinking about finding out what chapters we have and submitting that with the RFP. Tell them we have...
Yeah, but we gotta know which chapters.
Well, right, right. But once we know what chapters, we can say, send this to them along with that, and say, hey, cross out some grant money. So we just wanna get three, send this out to three people? Or what do we think?
As far as trying to...
Find a consultant.
What's the town policy on that?
Town policy is three.
Yeah.
But if you can't get any response, then you just give them a timeframe, if you don't, you go with what you got.
Are any of the people that you have in mind on the Southern New Hampshire Planning Committee's list of people available?
Mark Fugere is by himself, a guy in Plymouth is by himself, and then the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission was my third.
Yeah, but they have a list of people separately, not Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission people, but they have a list of people who could do this.
Who's they?
Southern New Hampshire Planning has a list of people, but not them. From which you may choose a person, and my question is, any of the people you have in mind, are they on that list?
They are.
Okay.
I remember seeing that list early on.
'Cause if you want them, one, one of those people, you can say, we want that person. You don't have to put out for RFP with this particular grant.
That's where the town policy was.
No, the town policy is three.
This grant is outside, this grant does not require that process.
I don't know about that, but we've said grants before, we had to go out, get information from people. I mean, the, the other part of it is you're gonna also, oh yeah, okay, we're gonna pick off that list, we're not available to do it, we're not available to do it, we're not available, 'cause they're involved in something else, so...
I mean, the two people we're talking about with Mark Fugere and the guy from Plymouth, well...
Even if they're on the list, well, it is a private company, so they may have other workload that they...
Understood.
Could be twenty-five other towns, or he said, hey, it's up to you to do this.
It depends on how many of the people that are doing it, so, but the town policy says if you go outside to spend any money, you gotta get...
We're not spending the town's money, that's the issue.
No, it, I don't think, it is, it's gonna be the town's money, because it's coming to the town as a grant.
It's not tax dollars.
No.
It's not townspeople's tax dollars, and if you had, and, and, you know, you're welcome to look at the Invest New Hampshire information and, and how they addressed not, not having to be involved in the RFP process with this grant.
I know anytime we've ever got grant money before, like, we got opera money, we came before...
Because you had, probably because the town had to kick in money, and we don't have to kick in money here.
We didn't have to kick any money in.
Well, either, either way, if the town...
We had a public hearing and we had to go out for people to do the work to get this on.
If the town policy is three, I think we should still get three, whether it's our money or somebody else's money.
It's still tax money, it may not be ours directly, but it's tax money from someplace else. Grant money's tax money, whether it comes from the state or the feds.
And sending out three is not a big deal.
No.
We don't have to take the low bidder.
In that way, we're covered, you're not gonna have any type of...
We, well, we can't keep any money that's left over, so what, what's the point of having a low bidder?
The only reason to take the low bidder is if somebody is twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, they're the low bidder, then we better take them.
Because you're under what they give you.
I mean, they're gonna be able to see these dollar figures and say, sure, I'll do it for that.
Why?
Huh?
Why are they gonna see the dollar figures?
I'm assuming that the grant, if it's been given, is now public knowledge.
Yeah, it is.
Probably.
And it's involving, everything that involves government with money is public knowledge.
I'm just, I'm just saying, why reinvent the wheel if we can go and someone on that list you have in mind is available?
Well, again, you know, the other issue you run into is that it's always brought up in the, in this town and other towns, transparency, transparency, transparency. And if we don't do it that way, then they think we're hiding something in this collusion, so let's just do it by the town policy and make it simple and no headaches. That's the last thing we need to do as far as... It's been the constant hue and cry here lately is that, again, there's transparency and there's hiding, so...
Yeah, but where, any money that can be seen, and, you know, I don't understand why, my, my assumption with request for proposal is to find competitive bidding. There is no competitive bidding, this is it.
Well, it could be, because they, they don't know what, what, they may not know what the grant allows for them to do the work. Or somebody may say, yeah, I'll do it for thirty thousand dollars, and like you said, the next one's twenty-four nine, okay, take the twenty-four nine, 'cause that's within the scope of what we're gonna allow to do that. That's, you don't know. And, and the thing of it is, is that, again, if you just hand it to somebody, they'll say, oh, it was a buddy of somebody, I mean, that opens up that door. Why open the door, why open Pandora's box if you don't have to?
Well, you know...
Yeah, we don't need to be criticized any more than we already are.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I say three.
It's not gonna hurt anything to mail out three letters.
No.
So, you, you're the one who needs to sign this, Naomi? You're the one who needs to sign this, I assume? Yeah, so, it's all right there.
But I know there was concern about what the wording was, which was...
We okay with Naomi signing this?
Pardon me?
Were you okay with Naomi signing this?
I haven't read it.
I haven't, I haven't read it either.
Of course, I'm not a voting member anyway, so...
Do you have a PDF, Naomi, did you send it to us, or is this...
Yeah, but I can do that. Already asked me for the first month's report.
We can make a motion to give her the authority to sign it.
What's the timeframe?
It's gonna be done by July twenty-four.
No, for signing.
That's the date that they're signing, Naomi?
March eleven.
I don't think there was one, there was, they already asked me for the first month's report.
Oh, probably yesterday.
That was twenty-one. So the first month's report is running the process.
I don't think there's any harm in waiting for weeks.
Yep.
I waited it for.
Well, I'd like to read it.
I think, I'd like to move that we table signing that until we are able all to read it. The whole committee, the planning board. I will agree with that, but I think we need to send out our quest for proposal before that.
How do you...
We don't have to accept any of them.
How do you pick who to send it to? Just draw them out of a hat, or do you have some...
I've asked a couple, I asked Steve Keach for one, who he would recommend, and he recommended Mark Fugere and the guy in Plymouth, and I don't remember his name. And I've worked with Mark on several other projects years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Steven Warren, Hennifer?
I thought Milford.
He was at Milford.
I think he's the guy that's doing their, 'cause they got rid of their building inspector in Hennifer, and I had the land use guy, and I think that's his name.
There's another Fugere out there running around doing this kind of stuff, though.
I thought it was Hennifer.
Maybe.
Mark was in Milford years ago, many years ago.
Yeah, many years ago, they went out of zone.
Yeah.
So you're gonna go searching for someone before it's signed?
Pardon me?
Is that what you're suggesting? I'm suggesting we send it to those three people, Mark Fugere, wherever he is, the guy in Plymouth that I was... Before or after it's signed? Before.
Before.
To get the ball rolling.
Yeah, 'cause they gave us a timeline.
We can always, we can always turn down all three.
What basis would you have for that?
We don't have an agreement with the town, we didn't sign the grant agreement.
By the time you sign it, they probably have the agreements coming back, so...
They wouldn't, they wouldn't come in and, before the board, and what is their...
I was gonna, I was gonna send them this, with the numbers crossed out, meaning the prices, and this.
And what's their, what's their...
We need to send, I think, the application, too.
What's their mission?
To update the chapters that I'm gonna tell them.
That we've identified and... That we've identified and they-
And they update it with input from who?
The town, everybody.
So you're gonna send out a-
That's all detailed.
That's all those guys.
It's all detail? I like to look it over.
Oh, yeah.
So what they're gonna do is they're gonna look at regional housing needs, they're gonna look at demographics in town and housing growth over the last X number of years. They're gonna look at, you know, anything that the planning board would have looked at when they did a master plan. This is what this person's going to do, but related to housing and the need for housing to come.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna, hopefully, I'm sure they're gonna reach out to the citizens and-
Yeah, that's the, that's the Ware Master Plan Update Committee, that's-
That's ninety percent of the whole work.
Yeah.
Yes, I have a committee, too.
Yes. Who wants to be on the committee?
I do.
I knew that. Anybody else? Chuck wants to be on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's Tom Carr. He did some work with Southern New Hampshire Planning. He did some stuff with Master Plan before.
Tom?
Tom, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, he was our representative to the Southern New Hampshire Planning.
Yeah, he just quit there a little bit ago.
A while ago, wasn't he? What?
You know, Tom's not the rep.
He used to be.
No, he was, wasn't he, at one time a while back? Well, no more of the rep now.
Naomi, can you send the application when you find it to him?
He's got a negative opinion about housing.
I'm on the exempt.
Oh, yeah.
So how many, how many doing, I mean, I heard Chuck and-
Tom Carr's retired.
I was just questioning, I don't, I don't know. If we have more than three people here, it's gonna be a planning board meeting, then we can't, we'd have to advertise it and yabbadabba do, and it's a pain in the butt.
Tom Carr, he's retired.
Yeah, that's Tom Carr. He's retired?
He's all done, brilliant.
You know it.
Yeah.
Well, there'll be regular meetings, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On this committee?
Yes.
There'll be a meeting with people.
Yeah, there's gonna be public outreach as part of this.
And all that, in the committee.
Because the, part of the committee's purpose is to do public outreach and to have educational sessions with interested townspeople.
Well, it's easy to reach out to the town. There's a lot of means of-
Yeah.
Communication, in the past at least. I don't know how it'll fly through the summer. Usually you don't get a lot of it.
Couple of years ago, did we, did we end up making a master plan committee? When that vote was taken and the selectmen were supposed to appoint a committee to update the master plan? Was such a-
The whole bill.
Three or four years ago?
But can you ask for the money, right?
No, before that.
No, it had to be before that, because I wasn't on the board when they asked to have the selectmen board. I was having a master plan committee. So it was before I was-
There was a citizen petition, I thought, like five years ago.
No, it had to be longer than that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Because I was there for six years, and it was no, nobody brought forth anything like that.
I think the idea was if you had money, you was gonna go ahead and do what they do that.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons we pushed for money.
I remember something on the ballot, a citizen petition where they were gonna try to get the, try to force the selectmen to make a subcommittee to-
I do, too, but I don't know.
I don't know how long that was. I thought it passed, but I don't know anymore. Either way, I was gonna ask who was on that committee, but it doesn't matter.
I know Tom did some stuff.
He's a quality planning board.
Yeah, but I don't see a big problem there.
There may be folks from a conservation who might wanna be part of that process. Select board, zoning, they may all want somewhat, we, I would think it would be useful to have some of those folks as part of the process.
You get a couple of new selectmen, so.
That's true. So the size of the committee is optional.
Up to me, I guess.
Up to you.
Yeah.
Should be an odd number.
Yeah, it could be an odd number.
Should be an odd number, yeah. I think it's too bad that only two people from the planning board can be on it, though.
More could be, but then it's a planning board meeting as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what's the big deal, so?
Well, then you gotta kinda watch out for the conflict.
Yeah.
What might be air of impropriety, as they call it.
Oh, yeah?
It may be like, oh, yes, the planning board driving this, but they're under another, they're under another hidden name. It's all right to have one or two members, but they have the whole thing.
Couple of people from the, from the select, board of select would, uh-
Yeah.
Seems to me that-
Well, I could bring it up to the selectmen and see if they had somebody.
I'll just send an email out to a whole bunch of people and ask them.
Yeah, zoning, select board, conservation.
You gotta be careful with zoning, too.
Yeah, because they may have to make decisions on some of that.
Zoning, you don't wanna, they-
I'm not saying they come as representatives of the zoning board. I'm saying they may be citizens who are interested separately.
But when you wear that one hat, it's, you get labeled as that, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't have a problem with them. If anybody wants to, I don't have a problem with it.
But not to stack it, there's too many for one.
Who's, I don't even know what you're trying to say when you're saying not to stack it.
It looks like they're overpowering it and not, it's not gonna be-
What it looks like is people don't wanna volunteer, except the people who are already volunteering.
We know that.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen.
What the outside looking in is the weird.
Yeah.
So open it up to a bunch of different people. See if you can get a mix.
Naomi, I'll put, does it make sense to put this, something like this out on the signboard?
The signboard's gonna be used in the next couple of days.
I don't mean tomorrow or the next couple of days. If we're looking for people who are interested in being part of the Ware Master Plan Update Committee?
Yes.
Is that something that can go up on the signboard? And then who do they contact if they're interested?
I know, mid, mid eight, or sorry, nevermind, groups back to back.
Put it up on the website, anyway, right?
For the website, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the Facebook page.
Well, should we have an alternate from the planning board? Suppose I can't make it? Yeah, could you do that?
Since Chuck's asking all this stuff about, is anybody in the planning board, can you get a third, does anybody else wanna be on it?
I will be an alternate if somebody can't make it. That's as far as I will go with that, because I've got a full schedule other than that, so.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a planning board initiative.
Yeah.
It certainly is.
Whenever there's the meeting information, the board should be a phrase.
Replace Frank or somebody if they can't make it, but I'll, like I said, I've got limited time starting now.
If you're gonna be an alternate, you should be there for the meetings, just all of them.
Depends on whether or not I can make it to all the meetings, because my work schedule's gonna start changing again next month.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that completely, because mine's gonna be changed very soon, too.
I'll be working some evenings, so that's the thing.
So I should probably cross you off the list.
Yeah.
Thanks, Naomi.
Off as an alternate?
Well, I mean, if there was an alternate, they needed somebody, I would come and get updated.
Well, yeah, but-
I may not be able to make all meetings. We have alternates now on the board, and not everybody makes every meeting, so.
Well, yeah, but this is a continuous one thing it's not talking about. Every night we have different agendas here. Pastor Bill, I assume that you're not interested since you didn't say anything?
It depends on the night of the week. I got one night free.
What night's that?
Monday.
Monday? Well, the planning board was-
That shouldn't be an option, because you should pick a night that you can be in this room. Because that's the most transparent.
That's right, that's a plan, yeah.
Selectmen's meeting, it's not Monday night, then, is it?
Oh, you're out.
And I'm out, unless you do it Friday. I'm out. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
This is gonna take an awful lot of time.
Yeah, I know.
I-
That's why I think we should have an alternate.
That's why you need like seven members.
What nights of the week is this room open?
How about what nights of the month is this room open?
It's like the third week. I guess, I'm not saying that you have to be in this room, it's just when you can be.
Must be because of the TV.
Yeah.
It's like the third week is the week that's the MTS.
Is that enough?
But I just got the Ethics Committee to take a night.
Didn't Jean, what are you thinking of? How many meetings a month? Meeting weekly, meeting twice a week?
The committee really can't do anything without the person who's gonna do the work, because they're the one who's gonna be providing reports on the data and what's being done.
Kinda giving the committee guidance of what they need to do.
Hmm?
And kinda giving the committee guidance, maybe what they need to do.
They have to wait till you get somebody for that.
Once it gets moving, I would, I'm gonna suggest twice a month. But, obviously, I don't think we need a meeting in March. And probably not in April, for that matter.
So you can get somebody that's-
We need to go here.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna use, you know, some public input forms, that's when I'd like you on TV. Because they give you two nights a month. Unless it's Friday night, so I don't know, you gotta get a lot of people signed up for a Friday night day.
Well, then, um-
Well, every other Thursday's okay, now that we don't meet. The planning board doesn't meet?
Like the first and-
I think the third Thursday is available.
Third Thursday?
First and thirds are probably not.
Yeah.
What night does the TBA meet?
Tuesdays.
First Tuesday.
Tuesdays?
Conservation's second, Wednesday, Parkin might be second Tuesday.
Make it easy for Thursdays, right?
You would. Just always come here on Thursday.
Yeah.
Don't know what you're gonna do, but just show up.
We show up anyway.
Yeah, first and third, so that'll be the first, second, third, fourth.
Thirteenth, I have the Ethics Committee in here.
What is on the committee from this, or is it gonna be here every Thursday?
Don't we have a meeting here the thirteenth?
Oh, more, yeah.
Yeah, they're meeting around the end of the year.
Unless they don't have anything, unless the planning board has nothing else going.
I'm gonna rethink this.
So, if we can do Thursday night, first and third, whatever works out, I can do that.
You have another moment there.
Pass the bill, back on the list.
For first and third. Will you first and third Thursday?
I think how the, how the committee is going to work and meet is probably gonna initially be guided by that grant's agreement, because in here it talks about what the committee is supposed to have as key deliverables. How we get there is the question.
Yeah, it's gonna depend on whoever the consultant is.
Yeah, whoever the consultant is gonna drive this thing is gonna be the-
So we're supposed to, the, the Master Plan Update Committee is supposed to facilitate discussions with town staff and people in the community.
So who, who ran it in two thousand and four? Who led the way then?
Well, it was numerous.
I was part of that process at the high school when we had that-
Charrette.
The charrette, yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't me, so.
And the person doing the, the person doing the work will probably help us with, they're gonna have to help us with. Yeah, conducting a charrette, a design charrette, or a community charrette, yeah.
This is ninety-four, you have a couple dozen people carrying the ball. I had, I forget, I was the head of one of the committees. I don't remember what I was, to be honest with you. I was reading it the other day, but there were a lot of people in the wall on that.
Right.
This is a different setup, totally. You're not gonna have that public input.
We wanna get-
We are.
Yeah, you are, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the update committee is supposed to do, is to go and engage the public, tell them why we're doing this, what we're looking for, why, and we want their input on what's important to them related to this particular sections of the planning, of the master plan.
I'm sure we had more than, more than two people from the planning board on that committee.
We got three now.
Yeah, okay.
And an alternate.
I don't know, he crossed me off, Mark, I don't know.
I crossed you off. I can put you back in again.
Well, I think if, if we keep it fluid, we should, we'll be fine.
I mean, just because you three are members doesn't mean that Bruce can't stop in some Thursday night and say, hey, what about this?
No, absolutely not.
Attend the meeting.
You can attend it as the public.
If I feel like showing up, I'm not gonna do that, I'll show up.
Yeah, I understand.
He can sit there as the public.
It's a public meeting.
Would you speak?
I'm Craig Francisco on seventy-five Bajer Bridge Road.
That's good. And I'm here as the public.
Could somebody in the public speak at those meetings?
It's up to the chairman of the WMPUC.
Yeah, if we're, if we want public input, we're gonna have to let people speak on-
And the whole idea is to solicit public input, so we're gonna have to speak.
Yeah.
It's up to the chairman.
The project for the horse.
Yeah, we sure are.
You've got your committee, you don't even have an order.
I know, I know.
So-
I don't even have a committee yet, that's all right.
But Bill had said to table until four thirteen to give everybody a chance to read both documents that I emailed.
Correct.
And then, do you have something?
Okay, so Bill has a motion to table this.
Correct.
For two more weeks.
To table you signing it until two more weeks.
That was ridiculous.
No, I got that.
I think we should wait till-
Bruce seconded it. Discussion.
Go forward until it's signed.
I think we should, pardon me?
I, my conviction is we should wait till it's signed before we go forward with anything.
Even the RFP, because they're already looking for their first report, and we're already, I mean, I think, I think doing some things in parallel might be useful, like-
How about first things first? Do we wanna, we wanna wait and read this before Naomi signs it?
Yes, that's what I presented.
That's what we're hoping to do.
Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're gonna wait for you to sign it.
No, I was gonna send you both the grant and the, and then you need to come back on the thirteenth. You're gonna have the gentleman from Pine Island. You're gonna tackle this, and then you need to have the next directions to move the RFP or by the-
I think we ought to submit an RFP. We should advertise the RFP, send the letters out right now.
Okay, well, what?
And give them until the twelfth or something like that to get it back to us.
Why are you gonna do that? Because I don't have time.
I don't either.
Is there a form letter? Because I, is there a form letter for this, or do we, we need to specify, we need to make it specific to the-
I don't have a form letter for anything.
No one has a form letter for this.
In relation to this.
So-
And I was going to attach-
So this isn't an open RFP, Naomi, this is, they wanna send a letter to three people saying, would you be interested in doing this, basically, and how much would you charge us?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, a lot of times, that's what we, I mean, we put it, we can put it out on the website, we're looking for an RFP, but you can also contact three people.
Directly, yeah.
That's what I wanna do. I don't wanna put the paper-
I'm with Craig. I recommend we do that.
Well, that's for in the paper.
Yeah.
As soon as possible, too, to get-
So whatever you share with the people.
Get that ball rolling.
Put it on the website.
We won't decide who it's gonna be till after it's signed.
Obviously.
But that way we got somebody on board, like, in April, yeah.
Well, the other, the other thought I have is if we don't send something out, like I said, there could be twenty-five other towns with these things, and the people we want-
And you end up with nothing.
Could be, right, we end up with nobody.
What was our total gift?
Gift, twenty-five grand. I get an RFP from the Conservation Commission to do a survey not too long ago. I could probably take that RFP and kinda massage it.
They can from Melvin.
Yeah.
And then once you get it, give it to me and I'll put it on the website.
So what is this, what is this person going to do, actually?
Lead the way.
They're going, they're actually-
They're gonna work with the committee.
They're going to, here.
He's gonna be the head of Huncho, he or she.
I'm gonna get a copy of it, Naomi, tomorrow.
Yeah, because it says in the grant what that person's gonna do, right?
It does.
Then, it's all written down.
What I signed, they'll, they did, but the papers do the-
Application, yeah.
The instructions for the application, they did.
Yep.
So I make a motion, we get our appeal. So we have some replies, hopefully by our April thirteenth meeting.
That's three weeks? Okay, so if I mailed it out early next week sometime, like Tuesday or Wednesday, that still gives them two and a half weeks to get back to us.
Mm-hmm.
And I could probably email it to everybody, anyway, and-
You're gonna limit that to three, you're saying?
Pardon me?
You're gonna limit that to three.
And she's gonna put it on the website.
Yeah, same, now, I mean, I don't have to even put your name, that's why it shows up on the front page of your meeting. And I put it on your page for the agenda, but as long as I can keep it on the front page and the website. And I put it on your page for the agenda, but as long as I can keep it on the front page and the website, and that I don't have to put any of your hearings in the newspaper, is it RFP?
I second Bruce's motion. What's your motion?
To get the RFP on pronto, we have some results by April thirteenth, replies.
Pronto being?
Within.
The twenty-eighth?
Like, when, when you're home.
Within seven days.
No, it'll be tonight when I get home.
Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. I'm hopefully gonna do it tomorrow, but if not, if not, Saturday morning.
I get the twenty-nine, I get the thirty, thirty-one, 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 going, going.
You get a vote?
All in favor?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have an address, Michelle? Benji's gonna be the new one, that's what she made me.
Excellent, interesting.
I'll put it on Monday.
Cool.
So, who's gonna ask the board of selectmen to get involved? Somebody doing that, you are?
I'm gonna email everybody. Board of selectmen, conservation, zoning, parks and rec, everybody.
You mean a bigger room?
Might answer, sure, everybody.
So, how many people do we have up for reappointment?
Two.
Why they doing that?
And, um, Bill, well, we're hoping to do it in April, yet, um, we're wanting to reach out to everybody. I'll get Craig's and I'll get Bill's.
You notice the vice chairman signed mine?
And Bill and Brian is before the vote, and I said we typically do the first meeting in April, so I get all of everybody.
All right.
So, I asked Beni to reach out to everybody, and let them know that their term is expiring, because I'd be like the, redo the form, if you're interested.
What, what meeting is it? Do you know which meeting in April?
It's probably gonna be the, 'cause we're first and third with work sessions on second and fourth, so it's, it'd be the first.
Who's the third?
Do I have to be there?
Bill's gonna be there.
I'm gonna be there.
I didn't ask if Bill was gonna be there, I asked if I had to be there.
Are you reapplying?
Yeah.
You're gonna be the chairman.